All set. I'd like to open the meeting at 7:03. And before I start the meeting, once again, you can see the membership is again is wearing orange, and I know something very dear to leukemia awareness month, so we wear, we wore orange the last meeting, and we're all wearing orange tonight to show support. Thank you. All right, we're starting off at 7 o'clock. Eugene Sullivan, on behalf of Kirkwood Holdings, public hearing, earth removal permit for property located at 904 Main Street. Gentlemen, if you want to take a seat right up here. Oh, you know something? I'm glad you said that. See, it shows you how much I really need these glasses, you know? Just give me like a couple of minutes. Yeah, transmitting of the Treasury warrants, number 11, 11A, 11B, 12 and 12As, a motion relative to the warrants.
So moved.
Motion made by Selectman Samaglia. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Selectman O'Connell. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you, thank you, Lou. All set. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Gene Sullivan. I'm an engineer here in town. I'm representing Kirkwood Holdings, as you said earlier tonight, to apply for earth removal permit. I'll briefly give you a description of our project and tell you some of the issues we've come with about and handle any questions you may have. Just to orientate you where we are, Kirkwood Holdings is an approximately 48,000 square foot building located on Main Street, just about at the edge of Woburn Street, Cook Avenue, is right here, to help you with that. Next to it is the One Jewel property, where Jim Street is, the large industrial building used to be Altron and San Manier and things of that nature. What we are proposing to do is purchase a portion of this One Jewel property to allow Kirkwood to expand their existing facility. This is a 20-acre parcel. We're carving off a little bit more than two acres off the rear of it that actually has frontage on Jewel Drive. And what that will allow Kirkwood to do is expand their building 100 feet wide and 300 feet deep, this building in the orange here, and allow them to have all their loading operations have access off of Jewel Drive. Right now, they have two small doors right here, and they have to actually back down the road in order to access their loading docks. They can't handle larger vehicles. It's become a real problem, so much so that they're renting warehouse space off-site, both in this building here and some other locations. So what they're looking to do is consolidate their entire operation on their own property by adding this addition. The reason we're before the town tonight is to request an earth removal permit in that probably, or this part of it, mostly the footprint of the addition and then part of the loading area is ledge. It varies in depths that we're going to be blasting out there, somewhere from five to six feet in certain areas, and then as we go towards our property line, the depth of the blasting is closer to 30 feet deep. We have prepared a preliminary blasting plan and procedure, all in compliance with both the town's regulations and what are considered normal blasting procedures. Some issues came up because of contamination on adjacent properties. We sent our plan and all the documentation regarding how we intend to blast and what our procedure is to the EPA for review at the request of the Board of Health and Planning Board and Conservation. We've also been to those boards as well and are pretty well complete with those processes as far as our Planning Board and Conservation Commission approvals. We received comments back from the EPA that stated that the, they reviewed this, they had their own consultant reviewer who's a geotech environmental engineer, reviewed what we're proposing to do, and they, their opinion was that it was highly unlikely that anything we would do would cause any problems to any of the surrounding neighborhoods or exacerbate them. They did ask us, when, this wasn't our final plan, because we're going through approval process, they did ask us upon getting approval from the local authorities, Planning Board, yourselves and Conservation, that we supply some additional information just to make sure that everything's 100% documented, and then they would give us a further review on that. And basically, what that is, is how we're going to drill it, meaning how often, you basically do a six-by-six pattern, and how deep, exactly what some of the materials we would use are and things like that. They're all common procedures. We don't see that as any issue, but we do have to follow up with that, and we intend to do that prior to any, we have to do that prior to getting a permit from the Fire Department or satisfying conditions of the other boards. So that's really, in a nutshell, what we're asking for tonight, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Before I go to the membership, I'll go to the manager to see if there's any input from the department heads pertaining to the request this evening.
Yes, there is a recommendation from the Public Works Department, and I'll just review this memorandum. The owner applicant of the property is Kirkwood Holdings with address at 204 Main Street, Wilmington. The engineer for the project is Gene Sullivan, consulting engineer located at 230 Lowell Street, Wilmington, Mass. The applicant is proposing removal of 25,700 cubic yards of material to construct a one-story, 30,000-square-foot warehouse addition, parking lot area and stormwater drainage basin at the site. I have reviewed the above-subject plans entitled "Site Layout Plan" with revision date June 19, 2013, and the grids, cut and fill depth plan dated August 30, 2013, and recommend the following conditions of permit. At the expiration of the permit, the grade shall conform substantially to the proposed grade as shown in the plan approved by the Planning Board and also submitted herein. At the expiration of the permit, the grassed area within the vegetative wetland 50-foot buffer zone shall be covered with loam and seeded with a recognized grass seed of good quality. The primitee, its agents and employees shall use due caution when entering and leaving the site, and the entrance and exit of vehicles and equipment is limited to Main Street, Route 38, to Lowell Street East, Route 129 to Route 93. The primitee, its agents and employees shall use extreme caution when passing school buses. The hours of hauling on public ways shall be to Monday, Monday through Friday inclusive from 7:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. The contractor agrees to keep loam within the town of Wilmington wherever possible. In the event of above conditions, that above conditions are not faithfully observed and performed, then the selectmen shall have the option to revoke this permit at any time. The permit is not assignable. Periodic inspection will be made by the Engineering Division to ensure conditions of the permit are complied with. The applicant will notify the town of his intentions to obtain a renewal of this permit at least 30 days before the expiration date of the permit. The applicant must contact the Superintendent of Public Works, who will establish a performance bond amount to be posted payable to the town of Wilmington for the faithful performance of work under this permit. Department of Public Works is recommending a performance bond amount of $324,500. If rock or ledge crushing operations are to be used on the site, they will be limited to the hours of operation between 9:00 a.m. and 3:30 p.m., Monday through Friday. The excavation and/or dewatering operation shall be in accordance with all town and state laws, Department of Environmental Protection regulations, and the Town of Wilmington Conservation Commission policies. The contractor is responsible for daily cleanup of all site materials, stone, et cetera, tracked along the hauling route. And then the final condition, the contractor is responsible to limit all dust and excessive noise associated with the earth removal process. It's a recommendation from Shelley Newhouse, the Health Director. I recommend approval of the earth removal permit. Eugene T. Sullivan, P.E., on behalf of Kirkwood Holdings. Al Spalding, the Building Inspector, I have reviewed the application for earth removal permit to the above property and have no outstanding zoning issues. Michael Wood, Superintendent of Water and Sewer, I have reviewed the earth removal application for 204 Main Street and have no comments or concerns as it relates to the Water and Sewer Department. Carol Hamilton, Director of Planning and Conservation, the project is currently before the Planning Board for Site Plan Review. The hearing is still open at this time. This was actually dated September 4th. I see no outstanding issues, however, that would prevent me from recommending approval of the earth removal permit. I would just add, you know, by way of information, that it's clearly recognized the concern that residents in the Cook Ave area have with respect to the potential impact of the, of the blasting. I spoke with Edward Kelly, one of the owners, this afternoon about this project, and he has indicated his agreement with paying for a second opinion, if you will, with respect to the review of the potential impacts due to the blasting. So as it, as it was previously noted, EPA has issued a preliminary review of the work to be done and will presumably offer additional comment based upon the supplemental information to be provided. So once that information is made available, GeoInsight will also take a look at this and offer their own opinion. So I think we're, we're appreciative of that effort on the part of the owner to provide funds to cover a second opinion, if you will.
Thank you. Before I go to the membership, just want to make a quick comment and ask the manager a question. I mean, I think we can all agree, the folks in that area have had their fair share of contamination, and it's, and respectfully, it's due to Olin, not Kirkwood. I understand that. But I do understand some of the residents concerned relative to the blasting, whether they think their wells will be contaminated or not. And I know there are safeguards in place, and I know Mr. Lepore showed a good concern as well as other people. Jeff, Olin Chemical, wasn't it something that they were supposed to do to monitor the wells? I mean, I would like to see that, at least the wells be monitored before, during, and maybe after, because their concern is the blasting, and I can understand that. Olin Chemical, is there any update with them about, because they were supposed to monitor wells in that area?
Yes, DEP has established a schedule with Olin for monitoring the wells. There are 11 wells on Cook Ave, and they have been monitoring, Olin through their consultant has been monitoring those wells now for about four and a half, five years. So there's a, an amount of information that's been gathered about the status of those wells, and that will continue to happen on a quarterly basis. The most recent monitoring took place a couple of weeks ago, and that'll continue.
Okay, all right. I'll go to the membership. Any questions? Start down here.
I do. I guess, first of all, I'd be interested to know, I see a couple of folks in the audience that I don't necessarily recognize, so I'm not sure if they're here for this matter. I would like to, you know, hear whatever concerns they have. Just generally, to go back to one of the points that Mr. Sullivan made, as it might be affected by what the manager outlined in terms of a second opinion or peer review, I just want to make sure that I have a command on the, on the process, and certainly the manager, I would expect to jump in if I, if I get it wrong. But my understanding is that under the CMR, you'll be applying to the Fire Department for a specific permit that enables you to do blasting. What I'm not clear on, excuse me, what I'm not clear on is if the earth removal permit and that the authority of this board, I think, is, can certainly be separate and distinct from blasting operations, which is within the province of the Fire Department. This earth removal permit, is it being driven by the materials that are going to be created by the blasting, and that is the lion's share, if not all, of the earth removal activity? Or do we have separate things going on? Fill material being excavated and then blasting material being excavated? What's the story there?
To the best of our knowledge, we haven't actually taken borrowings because there is so much exposed rock. We anticipate that 95 or 90% of all the materials leaving the site will be rock and will be as a result of the blasting that we're doing for the removal. There are trees, there's a lot of trees, so there is some loam and so forth, but the greatest significance is the rock.
Okay. All right, well, certainly would reserve the time to make additional comment and questions, but don't want to take too much time on the floor here.
Absolutely. All right, Al.
I'd be interested in getting any of the feedback that's out in the audience. I specifically looked at all of this in detail and also cross-referenced with the town bylaws as well. I wanted to just pose a question regarding the hauling route. Can you talk a little bit about what you anticipate in terms of the amount of trucks, the frequency? Obviously, this, this permit would be for a year. The concern is, obviously, that's a heavily traveled area, and I know in the past for other projects, we've had some discussions and concerns from residents about trucks going down some major pathways such as Route 38 and 129 heading out to 93 versus, you know, going through Ames Street and going through an industrial way and heading out through Presidential, through Woburn, and on to 93. So I just wanted to seek to understand from the department heads that are here and also from yourself as to how the hauling route was derived and what you expect from a truckload perspective to actually happen if this is approved.
What I can fill you in on is really the duration of how long we think the blasting will take. We anticipate a six-to-eight week process at the worst case. Obviously, with the nature of the rock, we don't know exactly how easy or how hard it'll come out. But we'll be drilling and blasting, getting ready for a few days, and then we'll pull everything back, load it on trucks, and move it out. So it's not a daily trucking activity all the time, but there will be days that are fairly intensive, obviously, to get the stuff out of the way to keep moving forward. And as far as, I'm sorry, I might have missed one of your other questions you were looking for. How many vehicles? There's going to be a lot of trips over that period. Usually, we're going to load up a 10-ton or a 20-ton truck, and that's going to be, say, 1,000 truckloads over a six-week period. At a minimum.
Okay.
As far as the route goes, I think Ms. Pronsky had recommended how we get in and out of there. I will be not just the project engineer, but I'm slated to build the project as well, so I'll certainly make sure that the people are going in the, in the appropriate directions.
All set?
I do have just, probably, hopefully, a brief question. Given the positive suggestions from Planning and Conservation, Water Health, EPW, and EPA, my inclination is to grant the request. I'm anxious to hear from folks, as my colleagues have also indicated. The proximity of the blasting in the construction site to some of the Cook Street residents, you know, it's close. So I'm sure at previous boards that you've gone through the plan with, that has been articulated, and I guess I just want to articulate it again here publicly, is a, hopefully, a heightened sense of appreciation and sensitivity to that, to that proximity, and I'm sure there's engineering standards related to that as well as some town regulations associated with that. So I'm confident that you'll adhere to those. One of the questions I guess I had for you, Mr. Sullivan, was at the top of the site where it joins to Jewel Drive, which currently, it doesn't, educate me, what's happening there at Jewel?
I'm sorry, I probably went a little quickly on the description of the project. Kirkwood's property is basically right here, and this blue area is what they're purchasing. That's just a wooded area. Their sewer comes in through here, they have some easements between this property and that, but basically, it's a wooded area now. You wouldn't know this property even connected to that if you were out in the woods.
So am I right in thinking that Jewel Drive effectively is kind of a dead end or a cul-de-sac in that vicinity?
Actually, this is the cul-de-sac at the very end of it where we're coming out. Standard Electric, if you know them, are right over here in that large building on the corner.
And do the Standard Electric and other businesses along the Jewel Drive corridor, do they appreciate or understand that, maybe I'm wrong here, will there be, after the construction is complete and this section of the new building is in operation, is it going to be increased, increased shipping traffic, I imagine, back and forth along the Jewel Drive corridor that they've not had in the past? Is that a fair assessment?
To some degree.
And we've, there has been communication with them, I trust?
Well, frankly, the owner of this property owns most of the other buildings on that road as well, but they've all been notified, all the others during our planning and conservation processes.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Do you want to say something?
Yeah, it might be appropriate at this point to ask Mr. Onisite, who is here this evening, to comment on the question that was posed by Selectman O'Connell as to the route. I know the DPW is recommending this route as opposed to perhaps Eames to Woburn and then now Presidential. Is there a particular reason for that route that's proposed?
Well, that's, you know, those are all state highways, you know, and that, that would be the preferred route for, for trucks to, to travel. That was basically why we're proposing it.
Because they're all state roads?
The, yeah, yes.
Yeah, as a state, this is a public hearing, and I will go to the audience. So anybody who wants to speak on this topic, just please give your name and where you live. Anybody in the audience would like to speak on this? Once again, it's a public hearing. No one in the audience? It's a public hearing? All right, fine. All right, is there any? Mr. Newhouse?
I have a follow-up question, actually, I guess for Mr. Onisite. With reference to some of the questions and comments that have been asked about the truck route, the last time that the board, we weren't the permit issuing authority, but the board dealt with a route for a development in Woburn, which we contemplated coming down Eames Street and then continuing along Woburn Street to Lowell Street. And then we, we took the position with the applicant that we would prefer to have the truck route, you know, coming down Ames Street towards Lowell Street, to take that right back up to the industrial area, as I think was Ms. O'Connell had pointed out. And I, based on my recollection, I think the number of truck trips here, if you're talking roughly 1,000, is, if memory serves me right, substantially lower than the number of truck routes we were faced with in that other development. But notwithstanding that, do you, do you see any reason to reconsider whether or not that truck route perhaps could go up Eames Street, given 1,000, I'm sorry, right back up Woburn Street and avoiding Lowell Street? Or do you think the number of truck trips, you know, accounts for that distinction?
Well, I think the, the alternate route that would, would be what DPW would recommend would be that route that you mentioned, Mike. You know, up Eames Street, right on, on Woburn Street, down to Presidential, you know, onto Route 93. That was the route that we recommended for that, that Woburn project. They were not going to go the route from Route 38 down to 128 or 95. They were going to come north. So that was the preferred route. We didn't really want them coming through Wilmington to begin with, but that was the preferred route through, through Wilmington.
Right, right. And I guess I'm just trying to, as I sit here, I'm trying to reconcile being, trying to be consistent with what we've requested in the past, but understanding they're not the same project. So I don't, I don't want to press the issue if it just doesn't make sense for the town, but, you know, as, as that issue is raised, does it make sense, really, to be consistent, try and send them back through industrial way? I guess that's the bottom line that I'm asking you to, to weigh in on.
Yeah, I think either of those two routes that we've mentioned would be, you know, would be acceptable, in my opinion. But I think the, you know, still think the preferred route would be to stay on a state highway, which is Route 38, head south. It's, it's only a couple miles to connect to Route 95 or 128. And that way, it would, it would, you know, the exposure to the residential areas would be limited, in my opinion.
Okay. All set? Anybody else?
If we are, I'm sorry, yeah, if we move ahead, where there's discussion of potentially getting a geological contractor, you mentioned GeoInsight, or someone in that capacity to review the EPA's findings, could we approve the request contingent upon a positive confirmation of EPA findings by an independent contractor? Is that, is that a reasonable request? In other words, if, if, let's just say for the sake of discussion, it is GeoInsight, and they come back and they say, well, you know what, EPA may have overlooked this and this. And so maybe there's a refutation or an opposite view or a differing view by the contractor from EPA, I'd want to reserve the right to maybe review this again and say, wait a minute, timeout, let's, let's throttle this back. So on the other hand, if they come back and say, yes, okay, we concur with the findings of EPA, if that becomes the case, then we don't need to reconvene this discussion, they can proceed. That would be my, my feeling. I don't know how you feel about that.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Mr. Shampoo is getting to a point that I had, that I was thinking about when I asked Mr. Sullivan about the process and the separate permit required from the Fire Department, because what I was thinking in my mind was that if Mr. Hall has secured a commitment from this applicant, that, that we could ask Mr. Hall to see to it that that peer review is conducted in conjunction with the Fire Department's review of the application. So whether or not that makes any difference in how you would frame that motion, I don't know, but that, that was my thinking when I asked that question.
All right, very good.
It's our intention, we're actually in the process of finalizing the report or the supplemental paperwork that hopefully will go out this week to the EPA, to submit all of that paperwork, both to the EPA and then all previous and supplemental information to the peer reviewer concurrently, so that we can get them both to be satisfied and sign off long before we apply for any permits with the Fire Department.
I think that'd be satisfactory. All right, relative to the public hearing, earth removal permit located at 904 Main Street, is there any questions, comments, or motions?
I believe you went to the audience and there were no questions, right?
Okay, once again, public hearing, nobody wants to say anything. All right, fine.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to take a shot at a motion. Agenda here. I move that the board grant the request for an earth removal permit for the property located at 904 Main Street, subject to the conditions outlined by the Superintendent of Public Works, and further that condition number three, provide that the, that the route would be as set forth in the memorandum or such other route as would be approved by the Department of Public Works. And if I get a second, I'll just quickly explain what I'm thinking on that.
Motion second for discussion?
It seemed to me that, given certain conditions, Mr. Onisite might like to have that other alternative available, and he can judge for himself with the input of other administrative people as to whether or not the route's working, and without having to come back to amend the permit, he could designate where he wants them to go, so.
That makes sense. All right, there's a motion on the floor, and there's a second. All those in favor? The vote is unanimous. All right, good luck with the project.
Thank you very much.
A second appointment, John Christopher, Burlington Self-Storage of Wilmington, public hearing, earth removal permit for property located at 114 West Street. All right, good evening. Just say who you are.
Good evening, sir. Yeah, my name is John Christopher, representing Burlington Self-Storage of Wilmington. We are currently in the process of building or blasting in a site at 114 West Street. We went through the planning board process and got approval for a new 105,000-square-foot self-storage building on that property. I know it's been out there for a while, but we did get our final planning board approval. We did go back and get a permit to blast from the Fire Department, so we've been doing our blasting over the last six weeks, and we should be finishing this week. And now we need to get an earth removal permit. We had approximately 20,000 yards of rock, ledge rock, that was on the site, and how we designed the site is we designed it so we kept about 15,000, or 14,000 to 15,000 yards of rock on the site. We had to remove it from one side to the other. I believe that's shown in the plans that were submitted to you. And so now we are asking for a permit to remove the additional 6,000 yards of rock that's been left over.
This is a public hearing, so obviously, I'm going to deal with the membership, and once again, go to the audience, and then I'll go to the manager. Relative to, any comments from department heads, Jeff?
Yes, again, we have a recommendation from the Public Works Superintendent Don Onisite, the owner of the property, is Burlington Self-Storage Wilmington, located at 35 Ray Avenue, Burlington, Mass. The applicant has, for this project, is John Christopher of 15 Irene Court, Bellingham, Mass. The engineer for this project is Gene Sullivan, Eugene T. Sullivan, Inc., consulting engineer is located at 230 Lowell Street, Wilmington, Mass. The applicant is proposing the removal of approximately 6,000 cubic yards of material to construct a three-story self-storage building with the pertinent parking areas, drainage structures, and roadway at the site. I have reviewed the above-subject plans entitled Drainage and Utility Plan with revision dated July 29, 2013, and the cut-and-fill color map dated August 28, 2013, and recommend the following. Conditions of permit, at the expiration of the permit, the grade shall be performed, conform substantially to the proposed grade as shown on the plan approved by the Planning Board and also submitted herewith. and also submitted herewith. At the expiration of the permit, the grassed area within the vegetated wetland 50-foot buffer zone shall be covered with loam and seeded with recognized grass seed of good quality. Number three, the permittee, its agents and employees shall use due caution when entering and leaving the site, and the entrance and exit of vehicles and equipment is limited to West Street to Route 129, East to 93. Condition four, the permittee, its agents and employees shall use extreme caution when passing school buses. Condition five, the hours of hauling on the public ways shall be Monday through Friday, inclusive from 7:00 a.m. to 3:30 p.m. Condition six, the contractor agrees to keep loam within the Town of Wilmington wherever possible. Condition seven, in any event of the above conditions are not faithfully observed and performed, and the selectman shall have the option to revoke the permit at any time. Condition eight, this permit is not assignable. Nine, periodic inspections will be made by the Engineering Division to ensure the condition of the permit are complied with. Ten, the applicant will notify the town of his intentions to obtain a renewal of this permit at least 30 days before the expiration date of the permit. Eleven, the applicant must contact the Superintendent of Public Works, who will establish a performance bond amount to be posted payable to the Town of Wilmington for the faithful performance of the work under this permit. Department of Public Works is recommending a performance bond amount in the amount of $98,200. Twelve, the rock, or if rock or ledge crushing operations are to be used on the site, they will be limited to the hours of operation between 9:00 a.m. and 3:30 p.m. Monday to Friday. Thirteen, the excavation and dewatering operations shall be in accordance with the Town of State laws, Department of Environmental Protection Regulations, and the Town of Wilmington Conservation Commission Policies. Fourteen, the contractor is responsible for the daily cleanup of soil materials, stones tracked along the highway hauling route. And the last condition, the contractor is responsible to limit all dust and excessive noise associated with the earth removal process. And then with regard to recommendations beyond Public Works, Shelley Newhouse, Health Director, I recommend approval of the earth removal permit from John Christopher, Burlington Self-Storage. Al Spalding, the Building Inspector, I have reviewed the application for an earth removal permit for the above property and have no outstanding zoning issues. The Carol Hamilton, Director of Planning and Conservation, the project has received site plan approval from the planning board, I recommend approval of the earth removal permit. I think that's it.
Alright, great. Is there any comments from the board at all?
I have a question that's...
Sure.
My question, Mr. Christopher, yes?
Yes, sir.
It's not directly related to the earth removal. We have positive recommendations from all the boards that Mr. Hall just mentioned. So if I may, while I have you, as I looked at the maps that were provided to us, I do see the site and the building that would go on to the site. What I saw was a proposed relocated West Street, and I think the word relocated maybe is what threw me off. Is the plan to have another byway or roadway accessible into the property in addition to what we already know as West Street?
No. That proposed relocated West Street, I believe, came from an old plan of, between the town and the state of Massachusetts, to relocate West Street.
At some time.
At some time in the past, and we actually really don't even know who owns the property right now. But we have no other plans to have another access into the property, other than from the existing West Street site shown on the plan.
Alright, that's helpful. I appreciate you clearing that up for me, because I was looking at it thinking, "Gosh, are they going to be, you know, creating another byway here in town that will involve maintenance and other concerns?" So that's my only question for you, sir. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Once again, it's a public hearing, I'm going to the audience. If anybody in the audience would like to make a comment pertaining to this earth removal permit? I see Mr. Sullivan has a doubleheader going on. Yes, sir, can you state your name for the record, please?
Mike Roberts, I live at 100 Southern West, across the street from the property.
Okay.
The question that I have is regards to just the process in general, where Mr. Sullivan was asking for a earth removal permit prior to even blasting at the Kerwood property, and in this particular case, they've been blasting for multiple weeks. Mr. Christopher made a comment that it was 20-some-odd thousand square feet of rock or ton, or whatever it was, and mostly it was moved. There's a big pile of rock over there. I don't...I can't gauge how much there is, I just...my curiosity is, is the earth removal process permit after the blasting, where he was requesting earth removal prior to blasting? And how accurate it...how many trips is expected on the 6,000 ton of rock that's remaining? They're not even finished blasting.
Jeff, you want to answer that? There's no question, there's definitely activity on the property, because I see it myself, because I drive by there every day.
They moved most of it. If it was 20,000, they moved 15,000 to the other side? I don't know about that. There's a big pile of rock, and they're still blasting, so I'm just curious about the process in general. Typically, if you wouldn't know how much rock you were going to have, then you would blast and then ask for the permit after the fact?
There is no requirement in terms of sequencing that the earth removal permit necessarily precede the blasting. It all depends upon the circumstance of the property owner or developer. Obviously, in the case of the previous applicant, they were looking to go the route of requesting the earth removal first. I suspect that may be in part to the fact that they don't have the space on their property to store the material once they begin the blasting process. It sounds like in this particular circumstance, that may not be the case.
Yeah, I can help out with that if...what happened was, we had a grading plan, it was done aeroically, I believe, and so when we got on the site and got our actual grades, they were off by about a foot or so. We had originally planned to try to keep almost 98% of the material on-site and reuse it, because the worst thing you can do these days is, you know, run trucks up and down the street, because you just burn diesel and spend money. Our grades were off just a little bit, and so that's why we had to come back and ask for this extra 6,000-yard removal. It was kind of just due to the original grading plan that was a little different. From the original applicant, I think he was going to actually bring his site grades down to...I'll just use the number 96. We actually picked the site up two feet to try to keep a lot of that rock on-site and not have to run a lot of trucks back and forth out of the town. So hopefully that helps with your question.
And I guess the other part of that question was the number of trips? Is that your question about the number of trips?
Yeah, the trips are expected.
Yeah, we're looking at about 200 trucks being taken off the site, truckloads of material taken off the site.
Is it answered everything, sir? Or you need to ask anything else, you're welcome to do that.
No, that's fine. I have an issue with, as far as the permit, or whether or not they should be drilling on Saturdays, but I can address that separately.
Yeah, that's an issue we can...drilling should be done in the next two or three days, in any case, but if that's an issue, we can certainly not drill on Saturdays.
Well, whether or not they're permitted to drill on Saturdays is my question, I guess, specifically.
I don't know specifically. If somebody...
That's an issue for the fire chief, for the Fire Department to establish.
I mean, I called the police on Saturday and asked them, and they were like, "Oh, you have to call the Town Hall." I would have thought that the police would have known whether or not there was a permit. They didn't refer me to the Fire Department. So I can deal with the Town Hall tomorrow, but I was just...
Jeff, you can call the manager tomorrow, that way you can expedite this, and you get an answer tomorrow. So if you want to call the Town Manager, give your name again to the manager, and when he calls, he'll return.
Yeah, I mean, that's fine. I mean, I guess it...the sense that I have is that there's a willingness to just not...
Yeah, I'll actually give you my phone number at the end, and if you have any other issues during the construction, I'm there, and you can certainly call me, and we can take care of it. We certainly want to work with you. There's no more drilling on Saturdays, I can tell you that.
Okay, I mean, if I can talk to the chief, and in terms of conditions, we can establish that, or I would expect, but if you're willing to do that, it would seem to solve the problem.
Satisfied?
Yeah.
If not, certainly give me a call tomorrow, and we'll work with you.
Back there all Saturday morning, but that's why I was curious, that's why I called, but nobody could give me an answer, so...
Hopefully right now, there's something we can do, as the gentleman said on Saturday, so I hear. Alright. Once again, go to the audience, public hearing, with no one else commenting. Go back to the board. Any questions, comments, or motions?
I move to grant the request for the earth removal permit for property located at 114 West Street, subject to the conditions outlined by the Superintendent of Public Works in the memorandum.
Is there a second? Second, motion made by Selectmen Newhouse, second by Selectmen Samagli. All those in favor? Unanimous. Alright, thank you. Our next appointment is Richard M. Conneville, North Reading Director of Public Works, relative proposed North Reading truck exclusion. Did I say your name right, sir?
Close.
Thank you. Good evening, why don't you start? You're looking for a request from the board of Selectmen, and go right ahead.
Yes, in addition to the materials I provided through the Town Manager, I made a brief summary of it in this PowerPoint presentation. Now, we're just going to go through this, there's 11 slides, and open to questions. The presentation, very briefly, goes through what the problem is in North Reading, what options we'd consider. We've come to a decision to look for a Mass DOT truck exclusion. Quite a process, I'll describe that process, there's an engineering study, a lot of details and data. We looked at opportunities in town, in Town of North Reading, and what's probably more germane here is we've evaluated the actual traffic impacts to this proposal to the Town of Wilmington. We're specifically looking for the Mass Highway needs, request us to get letters of support from abutting towns that are impacted. The route that is being proposed takes us from, something with Monahan Lumber, North Reading, roughly there. Winter Street, Park Street, Winter, Main, Lowell, 93 South, the interchange at 95, overhead at 93, back up to where it ends, that's where Mass Highway makes us do it. But essentially, a lot of trucks coming from either the quarries, originating at the post office, go this way to avoid this intersection. It's an attempt to, and I'll explain the problems in particular in a minute. What this colored map shows is the...what looks to me to pink, it's supposed to be red, that is Chestnut Street, Monahan Lumber, Maguire Field, North Reading DPW, and a major substation of Reading Electric Light are all on that road, and the other half is residential. So a lot of current truck traffic coming and going from our facilities, and a lot of what they call cut-through traffic. The yellow is the route in town we evaluated, something with downtown Reading or North Reading. You go down Route 62, pass the high school and the athletic fields, Ryers, and take that sharp right turn. That got to be the Achilles heel, and this is, that sharp turn right there is too steep, too sharp for a tractor-trailer to get around safely. It would have to go into other lane, opposing lane of traffic, and it'll get better. This process started in 2010. Residents expressed concern about the truck traffic volume and speed. So we looked at three options: increased police enforcement, traffic calming, and the truck exclusion. We looked at the first two. The North Reading Police Department has done quite a bit of enforcement, they got the state police, they're going to authorize to actually stop and enforce motor vehicle laws on trucks, major trucks, brake problems, things of that nature. We got them involved. Even with that, the chief doesn't feel it's been successfully abating the problem. We looked at traffic calming, which, if you've not done it before, it's a difficult thing. Traffic calming involves either making the road narrower so people slow down, speed bumps, or raise crosswalks. It all sounds great, but no one wants them in front of their home. So we had a lot of great ideas, and some of them, I liked the DPW director, but the Fire Department and police didn't like it because it would slow down their responses. So we got no consensus in town departments, and every resident was very happy to have it in front of their neighbor's house, but not their house. So that quickly didn't go anywhere. So it came to the truck exclusion. Again, this map I've discussed. The Mass Highway process, it comes under the Massachusetts Amendment to the Manual on Uniform Traffic Control Device. It's a standard manual law state departments use. And there's a narrative in here, and they said, "Here's three options: one, have a truck bypass within our community, an adjacent community, but on a state highway, or an adjacent community with their written approval." That's why I'm here for that piece. We've gone to Mass Highway, discussed it with them, and they suggested we have at least the written approval, versus even though we're talking Route 62. Further, there's a requirement for an engineering study, and it's...you can go down, we've done quite a bit of traffic counts, week's worth, and all these various things. Maps, physical characteristics of the road, how wide it is, the pavement condition, sidewalks, abiding land uses, zoning, traffic control, and things like that. And the final step in the process is, if you meet one or three of these things, Mass Highway will entertain a truck exclusion request. We happen to meet the first one, which I'll show you in a minute, and the last one. The pavement structure on that street was specifically built for trucks. My predecessor, I guess, upgraded that as part of a ongoing pavement management program. Go to the slide that says 2011 Bayside Engineering Traffic Study. These traffic studies, these are the things, you see the little rubber hoses on the road? They go to a box, and the box measures all kinds of devices. If you look at that slide to the bottom of it, Mass Highway...Federal Highway has classification for vehicles. It records everything from a motorcycle up to a multi-tractor trailer. What we're concerned about mostly, if you look at the second row down, is vehicle classification 5 through 13. 5, 7, 5, 6, and 7 are basically landscape trucks, small dump trucks, 10-wheeler trucks, triaxles, concrete trucks, things of that nature, and anything above there gets to be tractor-trailers. So we measured the traffic several ways. We measured it weekday only, weekend only, each day separately, and averaged week, all seven days. And of the weekday traffic and the weekend, weekly, excuse me, weekly only, exceeded the 5% cutoff. There's a 5%, if you don't meet that 5% threshold, Mass Highway won't entertain it. So we did it. We repeated that in 2012, and we found similar numbers. The traffic had not really changed much. As I mentioned earlier, there are several existing businesses or municipal facilities on Chestnut Street. Mass Highway's laws or rules allow us to back that out, even with backing out that traffic, which is roughly a quarter of the total traffic on that street, for DPW trucks coming and going. Monahan Lumber's customers, Monahan Lumber deliveries, and from their vendors, and deliveries from their vehicles. And Electric Light has a major substation. Even with taking those out, we still exceed the 5%. For alternate routes in town, it's really the only feasible route in town, is the one I mentioned on this. However, two problems in it is that sharp corner. Your typical 40-foot to 50-foot tractor-trailer truck could not make that corner at Ryers without either going up on the sidewalk or going other side, so the police felt it was a public safety issue. And not unreasonably, the neighbors here who get more truck traffic were not happy, so they were against it also. So in December 2012, our Selectmen decided to pursue two alternatives. They discussed them, and they came up with the one I've discussed, that go 62 to 93 South to 95 North, back up Havel Street. And for the impacts on town, Mass DOT has a database of traffic counts from all variety places. There's actually two in Wilmington, one on either side of 93 at Route 62. The one in, to the east of the interchange, 93... one in to the east of the interchange, 93, at Route 62. In 2007, we measured 19,700 total vehicles. That's quite a lot of traffic. Some of the traffic from Chestnut Street, which would be diverted, I'll just go down the list. The average weekday traffic for trucks was around 500 vehicles per day. Once I take out that local traffic, that 25%, gets us down to about 380. We're only looking for eight, and those two are 24-hour day counts. We're only looking for 8:00 PM to 7:00 AM restrictions. So, it cuts that back even further. And then, when I back out class five through seven vehicles, and I'll explain why, it gets us down to between six to 10 trucks, tractor trailers, per day. That's the amount of traffic will be diverted to Wilmington. The reason I have that number is whereas this intersection I mentioned at Ryers is too sharp for tractor trailers, about 85% of the truck traffic is basically 10-wheelers and smaller. They could easily go around that corner. They do it now. So, I anticipate most traffic, if they can't go here, say coming from the quarries, they're going to go here, turn, and go down. So, I'd anticipate a lot of traffic will be diverted, that small amount. From relative percentage standpoint, if I just take the total trucks, it's less than 0.5% increase in total traffic. If I take the trucks, I think they're going to be there, the six to 10 trucks, it's less than a fraction of one. So, it's essentially what I would call, I anticipate a negligible traffic impact. So, that concludes my presentation. I'm open to questions.
And before I go to the board, Jeff, do you have any input from any department heads at all relative to this?
Yes. I've talked to the Public Works Superintendent and the Police Chief, and they both do not believe that this rerouting of traffic is going to have a significant impact on the town and are not opposed to it. So, they're not opposed to the proposal that's presented to you this evening, based upon the fact that there's minimal impact?
I know we rely heavily on our DPW and our police chief for public safety. At this point, I'd go to the membership. Any comments from the membership relative to this? Because obviously, they're looking for truck exclusion, and we're the voting authority to do that.
I have a question, just mostly around clarification, if I may, Mr. Chairman. I'm hearing that the truck exclusion is for 8:00 PM to 7:00 AM only, and that all measurements have indicated that it's between six and 10 large vehicles that would be potentially rerouted.
Correct.
As a result of this. And again, looking at the maps, this is the clarification part. So, the large trucks currently, if they want to get from this point down to somewhere down further, I guess off of?
It's Havel Street.
Havel Street.
Right. Right now, it'd be very difficult for a tractor trailer truck to go east on Route 62 in front of the high school and take that sharp right.
They can't make the sharp right. So, you're proposing that they go, did I read elsewhere in the documentation here? This route, the yellow route on this map, which is somewhere around, what, 15 miles or something like that?
Fifteen and a half miles.
15 miles to span a three-quarter mile distance?
Yes, sir.
Is that right? Okay. I just, I wasn't sure I had the logic right, so I apologize. I'm not, okay.
And again, this is a process, it goes to Mass Highway District Four. They look at it, comment on it. It goes to Boston. Historically, Mass Highway does not approve a lot of these for a variety of reasons, you know, not moving your problem in someone else's community, for example. So, we really don't know if this even passes at Mass Highway. So, it could be they'll say, it's your problem. You deal with it, you know, in proper terms.
I really just wanted to just make sure I was reading it right. I make no judgment on the?
No, you're reading it correctly.
Fair enough. I appreciate that. And, you know, given the recommendations from public safety and DPW, and based on my own sort of knee-jerk reactions, that six trucks with a limited, minimal pass-through in our community, I don't see a problem with it. I just, again, I wanted clarification on that one point, and I appreciate it, sir.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Shambon. Anybody else? Mr. Newhouse?
If I could, in a similar vein, just ask for reinforcement, again, as to the specific locations in Wilmington that end up with, if your evaluation is on the money, the six to 10 vehicles per day during those specific hours. I need help getting on that map in my brain, where in Wilmington we're talking about?
Just Salem Street.
Just Salem?
Where it crosses over the North Reading line, Salem Street to the 93 interchange.
Okay.
Only that segment.
Okay. All right. That's really all I have then. Thank you.
Judy, look like you have a question.
Yeah.
All set. All right. All right. Very good. I know we would like to be a good neighbor. We rely on our public safety, and they don't seem to have an issue with it. And maybe we'll be in your town asking you a favor someday down the road, and rest assured?
Well, I figured this would be an ace in your guy's pocket.
All right. Relative to the request, is there any question, comments, or motion relative to the truck exclusion?
Want to word it right? Well, I'll just, I'll lob out a motion, I guess, and if it needs to be more specific, I'll ask for help from the manager in wording it. But I would like to move to grant the request of the North Reading Department of Public Works, Mr. Connevali, for the truck exclusion into Wilmington land as prescribed or as described by him at this meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
There was a second. Just a quick discussion. I hear what Mr. Newhouse is coming from, and I totally understand. We want to help out. If we're looking at six to 10 trucks, I don't have a big issue with. But somewhere down the road, if we find there's more than six or 10 trucks coming, and if we get complaints from our residents, then we're going to have to revisit this.
I agree.
Just to let you know, and I hope you totally understand that. That's one comment I would like to make. And I hear what Mr. Newhouse is saying, and doing a little hesitation because we look for truck exclusion in Tewksbury, and they did not want to help us. And that's not the case. However, we're willing to work with you, and motion is made. Is there a second? Are those in favor? It's unanimous, and good luck. But we'll be looking at it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, members.
Best of luck. Thank you. Good luck. Thank you. 7:30 appointment is the Board of Selectmen discussion, review a proposed special town meeting warrant. Jeff?
Yes, as you know, the board had agreed at the previous meeting on the ninth to open the warrant for a special town meeting to be held on November 13th at 7:00 PM at the middle school in the auditorium for the purpose of seeking to obtain authorization to purchase property at 120 Main Street, which is currently owned by the Archdiocese of Boston and is part of the existing St. Dorothy's property. As a result of the warrant being opened, there are three articles that are on the warrant for this special town meeting, the first being the article to purchase the property at St. Dorothy's. The second is an article that was submitted by the planning director, seeking a change to the zoning. Currently, the high industrial, highway industrial zone does not permit personal service shops, which would include things like hairdressers and other types of personal service operations. She is suggesting, recommending that this article be placed on the warrant to revise that and allow that particular use by right. And that's a specific change that would be proposed there. The third article is an article that was submitted by a petition by Kevin Brennan. He is seeking a zoning change to property located at 276 Lowell Street. It's currently zoned R20. He is seeking to have it rezoned to general business. And that is the extent of the warrant.
You're looking for Jeff this evening, tonight, or we, this is just a draft until the next meeting?
I would be looking for the board to close the, or it's actually been closed, but to sign the warrant.
All right. Everything's been before the board and discussed is a motion to sign the warrant for the proposed special town meeting that's coming up?
So moved.
Motion made by Selectmen Newhouse, seconded by Selectmen Samagley. Are those in favor? And it is unanimous. Thank you. All right, Jeff. Mr. Manager, if you want to continue with communications, that would be wonderful.
First of all, we have on the, under correspondence, the decision from the Superior Court. This is with respect to the high school project. As you know, we received a favorable decision. Judge Peter Krupp upheld the DEP decision to grant the final order of conditions. I would just note that in the decision, Judge Krupp notes that while Mr. O'Reilly argues that the schedule set by DEP was draconian and required, quote, "breakneck speed," and quote. It's noted in the decision here by Judge Krupp that the presiding officer granted virtually every extension requested by Mr. O'Reilly. Also, Mr. O'Reilly claimed in his appeal that DEP erred by granting a motion of summary decision because there were some items in dispute that Mr. O'Reilly was unable to address. The judge indicates that the, that he, looking at the information, even to the extent that the information that Mr. O'Reilly was suggesting he received late in the process, that information did not appear to substantiate any scientific basis for appeal. So, I think the judge's ruling is pretty, very definitive in terms of its conclusion.
Time and money, time and money. What are you going to do? Thank you.
If I may, I don't want, I don't want to let that slide pass. I think this is, I think it bears a congratulatory, or whatever the word might be. I think we ought to be pleased. I know I felt pleased when I finally got confirmation, and I got to read this finding. I think it's a reaffirmation that the town's Conservation Committee and DEP and High School Building Committee and the architects and the engineers, it's what has been maintained by all the parties all along. And so, it's just a reconfirmation or a reaffirmation that we've been dotting the i's and crossing our t's all along the process. And so, again, I just wanted to re-echo or reiterate for the record, at least from my perspective, that this is, to me, worthwhile of sort of celebration, and it's good news to be able to continue the process of construction without that hindrance. So, I'm happy to have had that notice.
Thank you.
Moving on, we have a memorandum from Don Onisite, Public Works Superintendent. This is just alerting us to the fact that we have some, what appears to be welcome news, that the intersection at Middlesex and Glenn Road has recently been, we've recently been notified, the project's been listed by Mass DOT as a, quote, "potential way forward project at 75%," end quote, which is a state-funded program, and the advertising date has been moved up to January 4, 2014. It appears, based upon this schedule, that the work on this project could begin in the next construction season. You will recall that this project was originally proposed back in 2005. We've had a couple of public hearings, most recently the 75% design hearing. And so, this is good news. It appears that we're on track to finally get the construction in progress. This project is estimated to cost $850,000.
May I ask, Jeff, it's, the estimated time to complete was estimated at about one year, and the thought was it could start in the construction season in 2014. So, I'm certainly not trying to hold anyone's, you know, feet to a specific schedule, but what does the construction year mean? And so, when does that kind of maybe sort of mean for a start and finish date?
Well, the, if the advertising begins in January, I would expect, and certainly the superintendent can jump in here, that the award would be made sometime in the spring, and then construction start perhaps May, June. Is that fair to say, Don?
Yeah, I would hope that it could be even moved up a little bit from that, Jeff, and it would start construction in the, sometime in the mid-spring. And with the exception of some final details, you know, everything should be done by winter shutdown.
Okay.
Next year.
That's what I was kind of, my question was based on, if it takes a year and we start in the spring, does it mean we're finishing in the winter? But you're hoping that you can get the whole project done before the ice and snow come in?
I think that probably the main delay that we're going to have is just the ordering of the equipment. You know, the signals can take a while to get. We are going with the historical ornamental type signals that we put down on, next to the Hardened Tavern. So, that can take a little bit of time. But the construction is severely, fairly simple. It shouldn't be a long project once it gets going.
It is good news. I'm glad to hear it. Thank you.
Just an additional point there is noted in Don's memo, the DPW's begun the process to obtain the right of entry or temporary construction easements from a tin of butters. This is simply to create that transition between their driveways and the new pavement. So, you know, we're hopeful that there'll be no issues there. We have a letter from Susan Bump, the auditor of the Commonwealth. This is simply to notify the town that we are slated to receive $10,180. This is by way of money to, at least in part, reimburse for the special U.S. Senate election that was held this past year. It's not clear at this point when that money will be received. We have an advisory from the ABCC, Alcohol, Alcoholic Beverage Control Commission, just advising the board that effective October 1st applications that do not have a Department of Revenue certificate of good standing, or a conditional release, or notice of payment plan from DOR will be returned. Apparently, there've been some instances where this information hasn't been forthcoming by the applicants, and it's slowed up the process. So, they're looking to establish that provision. Correspondence from the Department of Public Utilities. This is just indicating on August 26, 2013, in compliance with the investigation by the Department of Public Utilities pursuant to Chapter 209, Section 51 of the Acts of 2012, an act relative to competitively priced electricity in the Commonwealth, that National Grid has filed a proposed cost-based rate design with the Department of Public Utilities. The matter has been docketed. So, essentially, this is a request for a rate adjustment that will be considered by the DPU, and there'll be a public hearing. They're indicating the hearing, a comment period will end January 1, 2014. We also have correspondence from Comcast. They're just indicating that to announce that it will continue, Comcast will continue to provide high-speed internet service to the Wilmington schools and your libraries. to the Wilmington schools and your libraries free of charge again this year, continuing the company's tradition of putting its advanced fiber technology to work for the communities we're serving. Comcast has offered the high-speed internet service to schools, libraries, and boys' and girls' clubs across the region since our arrival in 2003. Comcast uses an advanced fiber-rich network to deliver free cable television service to schools and other public buildings in Wilmington. Company's broadband contribution to Wilmington alone has an annual value of $8,928. We have correspondence from Verizon, Verizon FiOS. And they're advising us of some channel realignment. On or after December 19, 2013, Channel 1750 will be removed from the FiOS TV channel lineup. The current programming on Channel 1750 is El Jazzari America. Will continue to be available on Channel 114. Customers will be notified by means of bill message in October's bill cycle. On or after September 23, 2013, Channel 160 Style becomes Esquire Network, featuring a wide variety of content, including programming about gaming and technology, entertainment, food, fashion, women, human, humor, and travel. Customers are currently being notified by means of an on-screen message center notice. Customers will also be notified by means of a bill message in the November bill cycle. And then on or after October 1, 2013, Channel 191 will be discontinued. G4, which is the channel, programming will continue to be available on the FiOS Free On-Demand channel. Notice will be issued in the November bill cycle. Okay. And under Board to Consider. We have ratification of the purchase and sale agreement relative to acquisition of real property currently owned by the Roman Catholic Archdiocese. If you recall, the board previously signed a, the P and the PNS. There was a requirement as part of the process that the notice of uniqueness, which is a part of the procurement process, be published in the central register. And the, following that notice, the 30-day period that, that has to run, there's a requirement to essentially confirm the board's intention. And so that's what this ratification does, ratification of the PNS agreement with the church.
Okay. Is there a motion to ratify the PNS agreement relative to the real property currently owned by the Roman Catholic Archdiocese of Boston, located at 120 Main Street, Wilmington, Mass., map 45, posse 142?
And if I could, Mr. Chairman, I would just add to that motion that it, the agreement, the notice, or the signature be pending signed authorization by the Archbishop Sean O'Malley. We were anticipating that the agreement would be received, signed by the church. But since it has not been signed yet by the church, but is expected to, I would just suggest that it, that the motion include the ratification is pending authorization by the church.
Then incorporated in the motion as described by the town manager, and you need the blessing of the Cardinal as well. Literally, you need the blessing. That's true. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion made by Selectman Newhouse. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Selectman O'Connell. Are those in favor? And it's unanimous. Very good. Moving on.
Okay, we have an easement the board is being asked to consider. This is a confirmatory grant of utility easement with Target. As you know, Target is developing a store on, off of Ballard Vale Street. Part of the property that they will occupy is, includes an area of a, where the town has water utilities that run one through, and one through that area. And so this easement needs to be signed that authorizes the town to have ongoing access in the event we need to do any maintenance to our public utility.
Presume that council has reviewed or will review it before it's delivered and recorded?
Yes. Council has reviewed this and been in touch with council from Target. And this language is, has been approved by council.
Based on that, Mr. Chairman, I move that we execute the confirmatory grant of utility easement as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, motion made by Selectman Newhouse, second by Selectman Samagley. Are those in favor? Unanimous.
Next, we have the, Board to Consider Ratification of My Appointment of Robert Mallett to the Wilmington Historical Commission. As you know, Carolyn Harris, a longtime member of the Historical Commission and chair for many years, has stepped down. And there's a vacancy, or has been a vacancy, on the Historical Commission. And Mr. Mallett has indicated his interest in filling this vacancy. I spoke with him a couple of weeks ago. I think he, he seems to have an interest in preservation and in history. And so I would recommend his appointment.
Very good. Is there a motion to ratify the town manager's appointment of Robert Mallett to the Historical Commission?
Second. So moved.
Motion made by Selectman Samagley. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Selectman Shampoo. Are those in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you.
We also have a recommendation for the board to consider appointing Diane Giambardino to the Wilmington Council for the Arts. The term would expire on April 30, 2015. This would fill a vacancy.
Very good. Is there a motion to accept that?
I'll move to appoint, to, yeah, I'll move to appoint Diane Giambardino to the Wilmington Council for the Arts for a term to expire April 30, 2015.
Second.
Is there a second? Second. Motion made by Selectman Shampoo, second by Selectman Newhouse. Are those in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you.
We have Board to Consider Approval of License to Sell Christmas Trees for the Boy Scouts of America Troop 56. This, as you know, is an annual request. The, do have a recommendation from the police chief. The Wilmington Police has reviewed the application of John Affleckitis for the, for an application for license to sell Christmas trees on behalf of the Wilmington United Methodist Church at 189, at 89 Church Street. The police department recommends approval of the license as requested.
And traditionally, the board has always waived the fee on that. So is there a motion for the Boy Scouts?
Move to grant the request and waive the fee.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Motion made by Selectman Newhouse, second by Selectman Samagley. Are those in favor? And it's unanimous. Thank you.
I can't believe we're approving Christmas trees already. What happened to Salma?
My intention was for the Boy Scouts of America and for the Wilmington Methodist Church.
All right, next, we have Board to Consider the request of Mark Nelson to place articles on the warrant for the special town meeting to be held on Wednesday, November 13. As you know, Mr. Nelson submitted a request to have four articles placed on the warrant. This is all related to property in the area of Poplar Street. In particular, part of Parcel 18, Parcel 19A, part of Parcel 21, and part of, and again, part of Parcel 21. He sent a letter dated September 16 to the chairman. Respectfully requests the enclosed four petitions to purchase town-owned land be placed on the agenda for the next scheduled Board of Selectmen meeting for formal vote to incorporate these petitions as articles on the warrant for the upcoming special town meeting. And he references them. The sale of these four pieces of town land could help defray the cost to purchase the St. Dorothy's property. These four properties were taken for non-payment of taxes in 1938. The sale would place them back on the tax rolls. Also, see the attached proposed exchange submitted to the town by my family in 1989. My family is also very interested in obtaining other town-owned property in the area to maintain as open space. If you have any questions or concerns, they can be reached at the fax and email listed below. This is, he did submit the article. There were no signatures provided with the article. So as, as you know, Mr. Chairman, typically, the requirement for petition articles is that on a special town meeting, the individual petitioning must obtain at least 100 signatures of registered voters.
No, I agree. I don't think it's been the history of this board to allow somebody to put a warrant article on and not even get a signature, let alone bypass on 100 registered signatures that obviously people get like 150 to 200 just to make sure they can actually get a warrant article. So I, whatever's the pleasure of the board, I would recommend.
Mr. Chairman, isn't, I think you both just answered it. But isn't there a procedure for residents to get a warrant article on a, on a special town meeting?
Yeah, you stand outside Market Basket or Lutze's and ask people, "Would you vote for my warrant article so I can appear on the town meeting?"
Okay, so this gentleman didn't do any of the work to do that. And there is four articles he's suggesting we put on. So each one of those would have needed 100 signatures as well.
Yes.
I was just trying to clarify.
I think we should just move over. You know, whatever the pleasure of the board is, I don't think.
I make a motion, we don't.
Don't take no action?
We don't take any action.
All right. Motion made by Selectman Samagley. Is there a motion?
No.
Do you need a motion?
All right. We just wanted to make it official, you know, so.
It's official.
All right, you can send Mr. Nelson a letter. Saying it's been denied. Thank you. All right.
Then, actually, Board to Consider, it's already voted, but we just need to have signatures for the warrant.
I'll just pass that along. Wonderful. And while we're doing that, any public comments at all? Mr. Lincolnfelder?
Yeah, please, I'll go. On Conference Street, just wanted to make a comment towards the high school, but it was very brief, that there were a lot of issues that I considered before and still consider. There were technical misrepresentations in MSB applications.
Wait, can I, no, let me just finish.
No, but what I'm going to say, I'm still going to follow up on the AUL area.
Mr. Lincolnfelder, no, you already mentioned it. And I'll tell you, rule yada yada. That's done. You're done. Thank you.
Mr. McQuaid, would you have a question? You know, time after time, we've, we've been telling people for a year and a half that the various maneuvers by a small number of residents who will not accept the will of the residents of this town to build a new school at that site. We have been saying for a year and a half that we are confident that the decision will be upheld. Yet, month after month after month, we deal with people trying to put obstructions in the way of completing that project on time and on budget. And the, and the, and, Mr. Chairman.
Please don't interrupt.
We've heard how many, up 10 times at these various meetings, it being expressed by the previous speaker that notwithstanding the process that has occurred, notwithstanding the legal process, that he will continue to do whatever he can in order to prevent the construction of that high school because of his concern with the AUL area. And I, I just continue to be amazed at the prospect of the Board of Selectmen somehow we're supposed to give shrift to an individual who professes to be, you know, a licensed site professional with, with very limited experience and to just ignore the recommendations of, of professionals at this town and the taxpayers have paid considerable amounts of money who have considerable amounts of experience on similarly situated projects. And, you know, it just, it just never ends. And I commend your decision to rule those comments out of order.
All right, thank you. Why don't we just continue with the public comments in the audience? We'll continue with new business committee reports. And I'll start at this side of the table.
Okay, thank you. It's not a, not committee report. I'll just offer up a few observations. I guess I want to first say thank you and congratulations to the appointees, Mr. Mallett, as well as Ms. GR, GM Baradino. I think sometimes we, we vote for these folks. And at least I don't take the time to acknowledge that these folks are giving up some of their personal time to, to serve in these capacities. And I appreciate their, their willingness to do so. So thank you to them and congratulations to them as well. I also want to, when we took the vote to move on the town meeting, I didn't take the time to chat about it at that time. And I'll briefly say at this time that this is an exciting time for the town of Wilmington. And I want the residents of the community to mark the date. Mark, what is it, the 13th of November. And it's 7 o'clock. It's not going to be an all-day affair. And it's a very exciting opportunity for residents in the community to come and be a part of this process. The acquisition of this land will be an important component, I believe, to the town's reservoir of available space for generations to come. And so I'm very proud to be a part of the Board of Selectmen that's helping to make that happen. And hopefully, the residents will also take the same pride in voting that forward on that evening. And lastly, I want to just simply say that the Chamber of Commerce, of which I acknowledge, I should put out there that I'm a member of the Board of Directors of that organization, put on yesterday the 5K and Half Marathon. In spite of it starting out as a rainy day, it ended up a beautiful day. There were several hundred runners that ran through the streets of Wilmington, both on, on both races. It was, it went off wonderfully because of the great efforts of the Wilmington Police Department Chief. Thank you very much for your team and for all the work that I saw them doing out there. Because of the great efforts of the Interact Rotarian, the children that, from the high school that worked on it and volunteered. Because of so many volunteers from the Chamber of Commerce, as well as other organizations throughout the community. I just want to give a big thumbs up to everyone who came out and either raced, participated, displayed, or volunteered to keep that event going. I believe it's a really positive event for the town of Wilmington. And it was exciting to see it come off yesterday. So thank you to everyone for that. And congratulations to the runners who finished with some great times as well. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Just a quick committee report update for the Yentile Farm Development Committee. We did meet last Thursday. And we have completed the RFP process. And we took the time as a committee to look at all of the proposals that came back. We scored them individually and collectively as a committee. And we're very pleased to say that we have decided on two that we are going to interview. And we will be establishing some meeting dates in more specific details. But I think it's important to note that in the proposals that came back, it's exciting to see some of the project timelines being conveyed in terms of, you know, some public process, some rendering, some actual design materials that we can share in a public fashion to obtain some feedback from the residents. So I think it's great that from a summer session standpoint, we did not meet. But now we're in a full fall series to get the project through the design phase. And certainly, we'll have more updates to follow. But we have gone to the next step. And I look forward to bringing further updates before the board and perhaps get on an agenda at some point in the near future.
And Judy, you're doing a fantastic job. Just keep it up. Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Samagley?
I agree. I don't have any new business report.
All right. If I'll turn the page, I believe it is Important Dates.
Yes, under Important Dates, the farmer's market is being, is holding their. Yes, under important dates, Farmers Market is being, is holding their event again on April 29, 10:30 to 1:30 p.m. at the Town Common Parking Lot. October 6 is the Hardened Tavern Open House, 2 p.m. to 4 p.m. October 9 is the Brush Drop Off, Old Main Street, 8 a.m. to 2 p.m. October 8, the Finance Committee Meeting Town Hall, Room 9, 7 p.m. I would just add that as, as a result of the fact that we do have a zoning article as part of the warrant here, a couple of zoning articles that the Planning Board will be holding their meeting at the same time. October 12, Brush Drop Off, Old Main Street, 9 a.m. to 4 p.m. Columbus Day is October 14, the Town Hall, Town Offices will be closed. October 15 is the next Board of Selectmen's meeting here at 7. October 17, the High School Building Committee, right here, Room 9, at 6:30. And then the 22nd of October is the Finance, Finance Committee Planning Board, oh, I'm sorry, so I jumped the gun here, on the 8th. The 8th is actually just a Finance Committee meeting. The meeting of the 22nd is both planning and finance. That's in preparation for the special town meeting.
And before I call from the German, I know we're going to go into executive session, but I'm looking at the calendar. Jeff, it looks like in September, you've been what, TM Town Manager for about a year now?
Yeah, just, just about, yeah.
Yeah, I looked at it. I think you've been doing an outstanding job, and I just remember taking that vote not too long ago, and just thought I'd mention that. That's all.
I would just note, I wanted to take an opportunity to update the Board with respect, just going back to the St. Dorothy's property. You know, we have been continuing to work on preparation for that property, and part of that process has involved a environmental assessment. The information has come back on that. To this point, there is no, there are no issues that have been identified with the property. There are some data gaps that we, that have been identified by the consultant that still need to be filled, and so that work will continue. But I would like to, since it's been some time since we met, to discuss the St. Dorothy's property, I would like to request that the Board meet an executive session this evening to, so that I can provide an update on, on that project.
Very good. So the Board's going to adjourn not to return. We're going to go into executive session to discuss real property. Is there a motion to do that?
So moved.
Motion made by Selectman Samagli, a second by Selectman Newhouse. All those in favor? And to make it official, a roll call?
Yes.
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 All right, thank you, and we'll see you at the next meeting. Have a nice night. Thank you.